The order should be right at six thirty and we'll start with the roll. Lauren, would you call the roll, please? Or, excuse me, before we do that, let's open up in prayer. Commissioner Altizer, would you lead us in word, please?
Dear Lord, thank you so very much for this beautiful day. Thank you for all you've blessed us with. Our neighbors to the north in Kentucky, please help those families that are along that river and help them find their loved ones and be with all the rest that survive and protect them, Lord. Be with us tonight as we make decisions for this city and for the people who live here and make us make good decisions, Lord. Watch over us and protect us. All this, we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Mama disowned me. She was about to start off that having prayer. Can you call the roll, please?
Altizer.
Here.
Coker.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Hardwick.
Here.
Hasty.
Here.
Longmire. Absent. Peterson. Slattery.
Here.
And Silkwood. Absent. That is, uh, let's see, seven.
Thank you. We've got a quorum, so we will proceed. First up on the agenda is public hearings. We do not have any scheduled, so we haven't had anybody signed up for anything. So next item on the agenda is minutes from our last meeting, July fifth. Everybody got an opportunity to review any questions or comments about the minutes. Commissioner Altizer?
Move to approve.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We've got three items on there. And as we've kind of discussed before, this is things if anybody, any commissioner has any discussion, wants to pull anything off for further discussion, please indicate. Commissioner Altizer?
I'd like to hear more about the stadium townhomes.
Okay, so we will set that aside and we will address that individually. That is item two. Any other commissioners have any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
I'd like the other two pulled off.
Okay, well, we don't have a consent agenda now, so we'll pull those off. So we will take these items one by one then, and we will start with just in the order that they are on here. The first one we have is Millstone Phase eleven, Section two, the final plat. Do we have a representative from developer here? If you would, just take a moment to introduce yourself. I'm gonna let staff comment, but want you available for any questions, if you don't mind. But tell us your name, please.
Sure, I'm Michael Dewey with Dewey Engineering.
Okay, thank you. We have Sidney took the lead on this one. Sidney, do you have any comment? Yeah, so I'm gonna see Sidney, so who wants to take the lead?
I'll do that. She's, she is out today. And this is a development in Millstone Plan Development. And this is a phase, Phase eleven, Section two. It's kind of in the back, back there. And this is the final plat for that area. And I think it creates seventeen, seventeen lots with two open space lots. I believe the developer is here tonight, can answer any questions. It does meet all the, all the requirements for the, for our zoning and subdivision requirements.
I'll let you all speak for a moment before we open up to any questions or comments from commissioners on that as well. If y'all have something you want to add to that.
I'm sure this was a set of construction plans that was approved probably several years ago and construction's finally completing and I'm just looking for a final plat approval.
Commissioners, questions, comments, discussion items? Commissioner Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate you being here. Is there anything different with this plat since, I guess, was it November twenty-one, last time it was approved?
No, sir.
Okay, so everything's the same?
It was, as my understanding is, it was expired. That's why it's coming back before you.
Okay, just updating the expiration on it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so when do you have plans to, are you extending this expiration? Or are you getting ready to start on these lots immediately?
Yeah, I can answer that. I'm Cole Wigger with Good Old Homes. We're actually about to pave next week, so we intend to start building there as soon as we get the plat recorded.
Okay, and these are a total of seventeen single-family lots?
These are villas.
Villas. Villas.
Yep.
Okay, and so how many villas on seventeen lots?
It'll be seventeen villas. And they're either three or four unit attached villas.
Okay, so these are basically, is this a, are these duplexes or are these townhouses? I don't, I get mixed up when it comes to villas. I don't know what those are.
So it'll be a continuation of what's in Phase eleven right now, which is, it's attached unit, attached units, villages are similar to cottages, is my understanding.
So this matches Phase ten?
Phase eleven. Yeah, so eleven point one, excuse me. So Phase eleven originally was one large phase and it got broke up to Phase eleven point one and eleven point two. So what you see on the bottom portion of that page is part of Phase eleven point one, which has villas already built on them.
And I can maybe address some of those on there.
Okay, so those are single-family homes or are they connected?
Uh, they are, these will be connected.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, no problem.
I can maybe explain a little bit.
Director free?
Yeah, I can maybe explain a little bit on that. These are villas, so what it is, is the product type that they have, they call them villas. We define those as townhomes. So a duplex is a townhome. They have some du, some villas that are duplexes and some that are triplexes, basically. And, and so even after they get this approved, they'll still have to come back and submit a site plan for those townhomes. Their definition of it would be villas. Then we would be calling them townhomes. So, but they're, they're the ones out there, you know, that are, they're kind of, they look like, most of it looks like duplexes. There's a lot of those that have been built out within the other, other phases.
Yeah.
And so what's a little bit different is now with their, with their changes we've made a couple of years ago, now it requires a site plan for townhomes and for duplexes. So that wasn't, in some of the earlier stuff, that wasn't a requirement, but now that is.
Commissioner Evans?
Yeah, my, my younger brother said years ago, he said, you know, if you keep your mouth shut when you have a question for long enough, you'll probably answer your own question. So that's what happened. I looked at the plat again and I got my question answered.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Hasty?
Is this part of an overall larger homeowners association?
Yes, sir, it is.
That covers?
Correct.
This section, the other sections, and all of them?
Yes, it'll cover all of, this will be a part of the HOA that covers all of Millstone.
Is it a public or a private street?
This will be a public street. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Peterson?
I'm sorry, I had one more question about the two open space lots. Will those ever be developed?
No, sir, no, they will not be developed.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
And those open space lots are a requirement of the open space requirements of the overall Millstone approved development plan, not just for this section, but for the whole, for the whole neighborhood.
Right.
Not seeing any other questions, comments, no mics lit up. I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve as submitted with all staff comments.
I'll make the motion to approve as submitted with all staff comments.
Second. We have, we have a motion and a second. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer.
Aye.
Coker.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Hardwick.
Yes.
Hasty.
Aye.
Peterson.
Yes.
And Slattery.
Aye.
That's all seven.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is stadium townhomes. Do we have a representative from the developer here on that?
Yes.
Danny, we'll kind of do this one the same way. If you wanted to introduce yourself, what I'll do is let staff then introduce it and then you kind of say anything.
Danny Hellisent Holdings, seven hundred East Main Street, Hendersonville.
Thank you. Grant, looks like you took the lead on this one. Will you kind of fill us in on where we are now, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a text change that was requested on this project. It's actually under, underway right now with the construction. And they've requested to change the project description from, from owner occupied to fee simple, which essentially changes the method of ownership allowed to where one owner could, could rent all the units or all the, or multiple owners could, could rent multiple units. It's like essentially that, just changing that, that description on there. It is a site plan. It's, the development was allowed in the Old Town Commercial and the, there was no rezoning that was, or planned development that was part of this approval. So the only other item on here that we'd spoken with Mr. Hell about was trash collection, which I believe they, they've changed the note on that to state that it would be private rather than city trash collection.
Just want to have clarification there, Grant. I think you mentioned it says Old Town Commercial.
I'm sorry, Old Town Residential. Thank you.
Cheryl, would you, anything you'd like to add to that before we open?
Not unless you have questions.
Okay. With that, we have Commissioner Evans?
Yes, I'm, I'm gonna vote no on this, as I would on anything that comes back and goes from owner occupied to investor owned. Again, we've got very little developable, developable land in Hendersonville and we ought to ask for the best. And owner occupied, from my perspective and from my history and my experience, it will be what Hendersonville wants for a lot longer than investor owned. And my vote will be no.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may?
Yes, please.
I understand the concern. We didn't ask for rezoning. Our zoning permits this language to be on the plat. We could have put it on originally. For some reason, somebody in the system, and I didn't catch it, used the wrong language. It's fee simple. What that means is that there are individual owners for each unit. Now, if somebody wants to move out, rent it to their mother, if they want to live there for three years, keep it as rental, they have the right to do that. And that is permitted in this zoning. So we're just correcting this. If this doesn't get corrected, it doesn't stop us from doing that anyway because it's within the regulations of that zoning. But we want to have it for posterity. It should have said fee simple from the start. So we're not asking for an exception. We're just asking for the right that's in that zoning now.
I understand. We have a lot of those things we can't do anything about that were done a long time ago. That still doesn't, doesn't make me feel any better about it.
I understand.
Other questions, comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I'm gonna entertain them, I'm gonna entertain a motion. Somebody would like to make one?
I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Got a second from Commissioner Slattery. We'll now move to a roll call vote. Ms. Berry, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer.
Aye.
Evans.
Oh.
Hardwick.
Yes.
Hasty.
Yes.
Peterson.
No.
Slattery.
Yes.
And Coker.
No.
All right, motion fails four to three.
I might need to comment on it because it's.
Director free?
So this vote will result in putting us in a position where we're going to have to take action against the developer if this is going to be rental, which puts us in an awkward position from a, from a, from an enforcement perspective. But if this is, this is not changed as it wasn't changed this evening, then as far as the planning staff's concerned, you can't, it's gotta be homeowner occupied. It can't be, it can't be rental. So that's the determination of what the Planning Commission has just determined, that's the position that the city's gonna have to pursue. How that eventually ends up, you know, could still be determined, but there, it isn't, it can't happen where, as a developer said, we're just gonna go ahead and do what we're gonna do. It's, it's, if that's the case, it's gonna put the city in the position that we have the site plan that has what it has on it. And then we've got the planning, the majority of the Planning Commission supporting that language and not changing it. Just, I just needed to, to make that clear because this, this is starting something, this vote will start something that we're gonna have to enforce since now it's not changed. Do you, just?
I understand, but it will also probably require action before that happens because this is a by right request.
I understand.
There's no right to turn us down. It's a private property right, complete within the zoning rules. You know, we will have no, no, and I hate to do it, I don't even wanna talk like this, but we'll have no option but to request court action because you denied something that we have by right.
I understand.
Okay.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is the Cove at Old Hickory. We have a plat for that. And Grant, I believe this one's yours as well.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a preliminary plat for the Cove at Old Hickory. It's a ten lot SR one subdivision. These, it has about three quarters of an acre of open space, including the mail kiosk and additional parking for that, which actually with the current zoning, SR one is not required, but they are adding that as an amenity.
Have a representative from the developer here on that. Sorry, I didn't ask you up a moment ago. If you'd introduce yourself, please.
No problem. I'm Danny Wambel with Wambel Associates. I'm the project civil engineer. My office is at two sixteen Centerview Drive in Brentwood, Tennessee. And I agree with everything staff said. We've made all the revisions we were asked to do. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that, that anyone might have.
Any questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just curious, what's the average size of the lots?
Approximately twelve thousand square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hardwick?
So if I read correctly, this one and the next one was one plat at one time, correct?
That's correct.
Did, are you splitting them because you've sold the other land or is it just make better development sense? What, why did you guys choose to split it?
Yes, both of the pieces of land have always been owned by separate people and they were trying to develop the property together and to connect them with a bridge going across a drainage way that's waters of the state. Took us approximately a year to get the permit from a Corps of Engineers to enable us to design and build the bridge. At that time, with inflation and the cost of things, the cost of the bridge went up so much that for this relatively small community, it didn't make sense to build the bridge. So we have separated it and now are gonna do it as two separate projects owned by two separate people. They both had road frontage in, always. But we thought that doing it as one project would just make a better community. Since the Corps of Engineers took so long to permit it and the economy changed, now it doesn't make economic sense to develop it that way. So we've come back and asked that it be separated. And in going through the staff review, the comment that we had from staff was that if you're gonna separate it, then we would rather you not put the burden of maintenance of two separate roads that don't connect on the city, so build them as private roads and, and have homeowner association do the maintenance, which we've agreed to do.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Peterson?
Thank you. The total number of lots didn't change, is that correct, from both pieces of property?
I don't know for sure about that. I think the num, the lots numbers went down because in the original development with the bridge crossing, I think we had more lots in, in both phases. So I think the lot numbers went down.
Okay, and Grant, has the road frontage been approved?
Yes, I mean, as far as like the, with them being private streets, they would have to be designed per city standards and, and that would be part of the construction plans that they would have to submit. Is that, is that what you were?
Yeah, that's what, I got the cart before the horse, but, thank you, Grant.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So thank you for being here. Seven lots on this development and they're gonna be responsible for maintaining their road through the HOA, correct?
Well, there's, there's seven in Williams subdivision. This subdivision, the Cove, has ten. But yes, they will be responsible for maintaining the road and the open space within the homeowner association of this community.
That's concerning to me because that's a small number of, of households with potentially some large financial responsibility should the street need to be repaved at some point. I think it's just a real burden on a small community. Just an observation.
Okay, thank you.
Gonna let Director Free speak for a moment, then we'll go to Commissioner Evans and Commissioner Hasty.
Yeah, this issue with the, with the private road versus, a public road versus a private road, this is a fairly new issue. This is something as in the next couple of months that we're gonna be looking at changes in our subdivision regulations. This is an issue that I want to bring up for us to discuss because the cost of maintaining all of the existing residential roads that we have, especially dead ends that don't actually connect to something else. And this is a good example of one that would have actually connected two, two roads, would have been a kind of a, of a connector road that we've been through there. And then now it's two small cul-de-sacs. And just looking at the city's financial responsibility moving forward, understanding that it could create some difficulty for ten or seven property owners, you know, to maintain. And you can project forward, know what would happen and of course, is then the people living there would be, hey, city, come and pave the road. We didn't really understand it was, it was a private road. Hopefully the HOA would cover that cost. But this is just something that we had asked the developer to consider and they said they, they would and they would include that in there. That's not something that if the Planning Commission doesn't want to do that at this time, you know, we could look at as we change the subdivision regulations and have some criteria, we can look at it from that point forward. So that's kind of, I just kind of wanted to explain because that's a little different where in the past, it's just been, yeah, unless the developer said it was gonna be private, we just assume it's gonna be public. But I think it is, and it might not be for this one, maybe it's a time to ask that question. But we need to start asking that question as we have future development, who's gonna maintain these roads, especially if it's developments that are just on a cul-de-sac or a loop that, you know, that road doesn't service anybody but the people on it and the people visiting it and the people delivering stuff to it versus other roads that are, that are roads that anybody might get on and meander to someplace else. So I just kind of wanted to, to explain that. And that's something that if that is an issue, this is the preliminary plat, we've still got the construction plans, which nothing will be different about the construction plans, whether it's public or private. But if we don't resolve it tonight, we've still got another shot at it at the final plat where we could resolve that and that this could become a public road. But I understand, I definitely understand your, your concerns, but I think, you know, maybe it's something where we gotta really look at this on looking at the revision of our subdivision regulations and determine what streets should be public streets and what streets should we say have to be private streets. And in some case, and then what is the financial responsibility upfront from the developer to make sure there's enough money twelve years from now to repave that street and do maintenance? So, but it is a good question.
Commissioner Evans?
Well, that, that is my question about it. The first question is, do we have any standards that, that we would require the HOA to meet as far as maintaining their street? Is there any, is there any backstop, so to speak? And the reason I say that, the extreme example, I'm sure everybody remembers the condo that crashed down in Florida and killed all those people. The reason was that the homeowners association did not want to pay their assessments to do the repairs and maintenance to the building because it just costs too much. So I don't want us to get into a situation where every group of people has a diverse personality. And in some of these places, you would have leadership and followers and people that lived there that took pride in their neighborhood and, oh yeah, we're gonna pave that street. And then others, you're gonna have people who put their back up and say, oh no, I'm not paying for that. So I don't know how we can maintain a standard in, in doing that on, with this small number of, of houses there. Likewise, and I'm sorry to get off on this, we, if we have a rental property or a bunch of rental properties that we hear will still be managed by an HOA, well, if you have one owner of all those rental properties, then that one owner is the HOA. And that one owner can decide to spend money on that property or not. And I think we're opening the door for a problem there if we, if we move in that direction.
Can I ask one more question? That, the one that I originally intended to ask, is, is there an impact fee on this development?
No. And then we don't have, we don't have development impact fees on any projects. There's that per lot fee that's not a development impact fee. It's just kind of.
I know we don't wanna call it that.
Negotiated fee, but that's typically, that would be associated with a rezoning plan development for residential, you know, properties.
Yeah.
But this, this, this is by right, it's zoned appropriately, they're not asking for any rezoning or they're not asking for any plan development.
It, it isn't a rezone, but the traffic that goes in there has to go over what I believe is the most dangerous road in the city of Hendersonville, and that's Sanders Ferry. That road has been neglected for years and years and years. It's got a suicide shoulder up against a guardrail and somebody needs to do something with that.
It's got a suicide shoulder up against a guardrail and somebody needs to do something with that. Uh, that changes from Ward Two to Ward One real soon. And, uh, I'm hoping that we can get a coalition together and and start working on that, at least do the engineering on that road. That's why I'm asking about if, is, are their funds allocable, uh, to at least the engineering on that project?
Yes.
And I'll, I'll shut up about that and answer my own question now.
Yes, yeah, to the subdivision regulations, yes, ma'am. Okay.
Commissioner Hardwick?
I'm just making a quick question. I'm assuming has no, private road has no impact on services and police, fire, garbage, et cetera?
It would have no services on, uh, no, it would have no impact on those services. And then also, the private road would have to be built to the exact same standard as the public road.
I noticed you had somebody else join you up here. Did you wanna introduce yourself or add a comment or answer a question?
Only comment I wanna make, I live in a neighborhood now with the association and they don't wait on things, you know, they, as they go, they add, and like, we just had, we just had a lot of work done. We have a lake and the dam. I think it was about twenty-five thousand dollars, but they knew it was coming, just like we'd know a road was coming. This is gonna be my home where I live, so we're, we're gonna well plan for things in the future and, and not hit everybody with a five thousand dollar hit, you know, one day or, but that's, that was our, and our plan is gonna be in our, our association.
Thank you. Commissioner Hasty?
We seem to be talking about two developments, but we're kinda grouping some of the discussion. And we're talking about HOA. There're gonna be two specific different HOAs, correct?
Yes, sir, there will be.
So you live in one HOA, you might take care of that one, but still have the other issues with the other one. So, okay, still two separate HOAs that go with this.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, I have a question on, just kind of along the same theme that Commissioner Hasty has. Is, with things kinda being split up, are this gonna be two separate owners, two separate developers on this? Or is there gonna be something done to kinda maintain some continuity between the development where they're, you know, you're looking at stuff that kinda blends and flows well together?
Right, well, the, the creek divides the two properties. And since we're not gonna build the bridge, uh, they will be two separate properties with two separate access points. And they will be owned by separate individuals, developed by different contractors. Uh, so everything will be separate. There'll be two separate homeowner associations that are set up. And they're working on the homeowner association documents now. They will be provided to staff to review before you're asked to approve a final plat so that you can see the legal frame- framework and the structure as to how it's set up.
Okay, so we're gonna be seeing two completely di- theoretically, two completely different developments. Y'all are not working in tandem on that, even though they're two separate things, so.
Correct.
Okay, good, thank you for clarification. Any other comments, questions from commissioners? With that, I will entertain a motion, if anybody has one. I might suggest to approve with all staff comments, but.
I'll make a motion to approve with all staff comments.
We've got, we got a motion and a second. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yep.
Hasty?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Slattery?
Yes.
And Coker?
Yes.
That's seven, thanks.
Next on the agenda is item six. We have preliminary plats and this is Grant. This is on, this is yours, this is Williams subdivision. Do we have a representative from the developer here as well on that? Oh, hi. Welcome back.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, Grant, will you kinda kick us off here, please?
Yes, sir. Uh, this is the, the same developers, uh, well, the same, I'm sorry, the same, um, it confused me, uh, same, uh, set of, of folks that were, were working with the, the original subdivision that that has been split up into two, um, two different areas. And, uh, this property is, uh, being proposed to be subdivided into seven lots. And, um, it's a little bit of, over one acre of open space. The developer's part of this, uh, proposals also, has also asked for a, a deviation from the subdivision regulations uh, regarding the grass strip requirement. Uh, they're, they're asking to reduce that down from five feet to three feet, uh, for the construction of retaining wall. And, uh, this, uh, they have, do have a narrow strip for access to, uh, to Curtis Crossroads, which, uh, they, they're showing would be able to fit a sidewalk in both sides of the road. Uh, however, due to that, uh, the narrowness of that strip and then also the, um, the sidewalks and, and street and curb and gutter, uh, the, the grass strip on, on one side, I believe it's the south side of the road, would need to be reduced down to, to three feet to, to be able to meet all the requirements.
Anything you'd like to add to, before we open up for questions, comments?
Uh, no, I agree with all the comments and I'll be available for any questions.
Questions, comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Peterson?
Thank you. Is that retainer wall for privacy? From the other homeowners?
No, sir, the access is fifty feet wide coming into this tract of land from Curtis Crossroad. The road is going down from Curtis Cross, Crossroad into the property. As it goes down, there's a house on the adjacent lot that's very close to the property line. The house has a, uh, flat area where the house is built. So as we build the road down, we need a retaining wall to retain and protect the house, the house foundation and the yard around the house and front and behind the house. So that retaining wall goes from approximately two foot tall to approximately eight foot tall in the rear of the house at its highest point. So it's for structural, not, not for screening.
Okay, and is that homeowner in approval of your project?
Uh, we have not had any contacts with, with the homeowner. We've tried to contact them and they haven't responded. We have contacted the homeowner on the other side of the drive and had conversations with them and they're willing to give us an easement so that we, uh, have access and the right to go on their property to, to build the road and lay the slope down on a portion of their property on their side. Since we never got contact or never got a call back from the other property owner, we've designed it with this retaining wall to where we don't have to go on his property. So we just assumed that he didn't wanna give us an easement since he would never respond.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you tell me a little bit about the slope or grade of this property? Cuz it sounds like it's pretty steep, is that correct?
The property, of course, as all, most all properties here in, in Hendersonville, as you go up close to the lake, the property slopes down toward the lake. So this property has lake frontage. Uh, so it is a little bit lower than Curtis Crossroad. The drive coming in comes in at a grade of ten percent grade. And then it flattens out once you get into the property where the lots are. So it's, it's not steep, it doesn't exceed any of the development requirements for the roads or for fire protection. Uh, but it is down lower as you would expect when it's property beside the lake with lake frontage.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Hardwick?
I have two questions. I'd, one, and then I wanna ask Grant first. Are you guys comfortable with all the drainage and especially with retaining wall and drainage there? And I'm assuming with it sloping, it's gonna go into that creek that they were trying to build a bridge over, so drainage is not gonna be an issue?
Uh, I think actually with the drainage, we, we don't, planning doesn't review the drainage, but it's, it's, it is a public works, uh, review item. And, uh, Stephen may comment on that, I'm not sure, um, on the review process, what, uh, what all has been looked at there. But, uh, I may, I turn that over to Stephen if he's-
Stephen, we're gonna put you on the spot here.
No problem. Um, yeah, we, we do look at drainage, um, you know, at this preliminary plat stage. Uh, we don't necessarily have specifics other than what, what we see here as far as site plan goes. But, uh, addressing drainage would be part of the site plan review to, to make sure that they uh, properly address the drainage of their site and, and, you know, prior to it flowing offsite. That, that would be part of our review process.
Again, I'm assuming with the slopes and the fact you've got a creek, drainage ditch back there, it's not gonna be an issue. But the other is, you, you talked about the retaining wall. What is the material's gonna be made of and is it just gonna be a concrete retaining wall, is it gonna be brick and?
We anticipate-
Talk a little bit about that and how are you gonna landscape it?
We anticipate that it's gonna be a concrete retaining wall, sen- since it's structural. Uh, we anticipate it'll probably be, uh, uh, formed and poured in place concrete rather than a component type wall. And even though we're asking to deviate from a standard from a five-foot grass strip to three, uh, we will do the street trees and it will be landscaped, uh, just like normal without the deviation.
So really, with it reducing, if we reduce it down to three feet, instead of having grass, you're just gonna have landscaping all along that, that side that will basically hide that wall and, and landscape it?
Well, I think we will have grass between the trees. From where we have trees, there'll be street trees, so they won't be evergreen screening trees cuz we don't want them to block the line of sight as the cars are coming in and out. And we will have the sidewalk there right in front of the retaining wall. The, the grass strip will be between the sidewalk and the curb and gutter of the road. So it'll be like a typical street, uh, just like the standards call for.
So the, the retaining wall won't be just three feet off the curb then?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? I gotta add something to that. I spoke with Timothy Whitten, uh, our, our assistant director and, and also landscape architect. Uh, I asked him about the, the three-foot landscape, uh, three-foot grass strip and, and looking at options about what we would wanna do with that as far as landscaping goes, do the, the width and, and, uh, I think he had some, some concerns about what we would need to do, but, uh, that would be something that we've worked out during the construction plans with the, the landscape plan and try to determine what would be the best, uh, course of action in terms of, uh, what to plant there. Which, this would also be, uh, finalized at the final plat stage, but, uh, um, but the construction plans, we probably wanna look at that and, and, and the landscape plan pretty heavily is in terms of, uh, you know, what's, what's the best thing to do there and, and work with, work with them and, and try to find out what the, the most reasonable solution would be.
Commissioner Hasty?
Okay, you're gonna be building a wall that could be as high as eight feet right up next to the rear of someone's house.
Right.
You know, if I had that house and you're gonna build this road and I'm gonna be looking at a bare eight-foot concrete wall, I'm not gonna be too happy.
I would agree with you, but the grades go down with the road, he only sees the top of the wall. There, there's not an eight-foot wall up beside his house. The wall is to protect his house and protect his footing. And the house is probably five feet away from where the wall's going. So it'll also protect the soil that's adjacent to his foundation.
So it's not gonna be an eight-foot exposed concrete wall?
It'll be exposed on the roadway side, not on the house side. Because the road is going down and cutting down to go into the property to maintain a no steeper than ten percent grade. And to accomplish that-
Okay.
We're cutting down, so we're building the wall up, but on the homeowner's side, he doesn't see a tall wall.
You're going to put up some safety measures, right?
On top of the wall, yes, sir.
On the top of the wall?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I wouldn't mind seeing little decorative concrete on our side instead of just a plain wall, white. Yeah, and you can form it for a little decorative to, so, okay, I'm through.
That based on what they-
He answered my question cuz I didn't want our, a homeowner be looking at a wall and say, but it's the other way around.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners?
I, I have one more. The, the, the wall is a little bit concerning from, from the looking out to that neighbor. That number one, if they happen to have small kids, they can walk off of it. If there's not a fence up, uh, or landscaping to protect it. And then number two, if you're, if you're building a road and a wall that's within five foot of my house, that it just seems like there's gonna be a lot of chance for settling and cracks in the neighbor's house. I, I wanna see you guys do this. I like the project, I wanna support the project. It just seems to me there's some issues here that I'm just not totally comfortable with yet. And again, I like the project, I wanna see you do it, I'm just not comfortable with what I'm hearing at this moment.
Right, and I understand that. I wasn't very comfortable designing it to start with, to be quite honest with you. Uh, but I have researched it and I've convinced myself that we can protect the neighbors from encroaching on, across the property line on the wall and falling by putting some type of rail on it. We'll be happy to look at a decorative, a decorative rail when we get into the construction plans and the design uh, that would protect kids or anybody from falling off of that wall. Uh, and someone mentioned a fence, we'll be glad to do a fence, but I don't think a fence would be as decorative as some type of, uh, rail. And then as far as the, the wall, it'll be designed by a structural engineer that will make sure it's properly designed, it has the strength, uh, structural capability to protect the house and the house foundation. And then the contractor will be a bonded contractor that specializes in that type of work. Will require a technical engineer to supervise the job, make sure it's done correctly and to make sure that, that there's nothing about the construction of the wall is faulty construction that would be weak, that would allow any settlement or movement of the house.
I wish these folks would talk to you, um, because it, this could certainly impact the value of their property. I guess my question for Director Free is if we approve it tonight and it comes back for final plat and site plan and all the things that go with it, if we're just not comfortable at that point, can we say no or at that point, or if we approve it tonight, we're done? And we can't, we can't go back and revisit if we're not comfortable at that point in time?
Well, I think, uh, I think the specifics of what we're talking about will actually occur in the review during the construction plans, which that won't come to the planning commission. So the construction plans specifically in the area that, that we're talking about right now with the wall, that'll be something that Stephen and, and, uh, the public work staff, uh, that they, that they review and take a look at. And then anything with the wall, you know, uh, would have to be, would have to be done to the engineering standard. So, you know, if, if, if it's, if it's about meeting what the en- the standard is of safety and engineering, then we're going to, in our review, in our public work review, we're gonna make sure that it's meeting all those things. And then Stephen's heard all the things that y'all talked about tonight. So when, when he's reviewing that, you know, he's gonna key into those important things about the, and Timothy's gonna be looking at the material of that wall and that railing and, and, and all of that type of thing. But I don't know, I don't think that, I don't, I think the issue will be, come down to on the construction plan, if they're meeting the requirements, that I don't know that you could deny later or even deny now the, the proposal based on just that, that one element.
Okay.
That, you know, don't want the, don't want the wall, it's very possible.
It's not that I don't want it, it's just, I, I see concerns.
Yeah.
I guess is what I'm trying to say, and especially in the light that that property owner next door has not responded to you, and that's not your fault, but they're getting ready to get a huge wake-up call. And they're gonna be calling you guys going, what happened?
And it's, it's very, it's very possible then in the construction- And it's, it's very, it's very possible then in the construction plan review that our, our city engineer's office is gonna do. Uh, uh, once y'all get into the detail of this, uh, we could, we could find serious problems and issues beyond what we're even talking about tonight. About, you know, specifically how this wall is functioning and how it's impacting the surrounding property. Uh, but at this point, they, they kinda know what it's gonna be, but you ha, they haven't, you haven't designed. The specific, the structural engineer hasn't designed it in all of the different, uh, details to fully evaluate it at that, at that point.
The house is literally five feet from the property line?
Yes.
Wow.
Got a comment from our marshal. Do you mind speaking up just a little bit, please?
Yeah, maybe, maybe go to the podium there, Stephen.
Thank you, know you're all the way in the back.
I understand. There's currently a road, an access road in there for a pumping station. It's approximately twelve feet wide, uh, that these neighbors are used to. Obviously no residents living behind them, but, uh, just wanted to point that out, that the road is there. It's just gonna be improved and widened. To the city standard for residential.
Yes, Stephen?
Um, and, and as far as, uh, safety railing goes, uh, my understanding is OSHA actually has requirements for any, any wall. That exceeds, I think thirty inches in height has to have a safety railing. So, you know, the engineer would be aware of that in their design and address those, those safety railing elements with the design of the wall. So, that's just something to, to note regarding that.
Commissioner Slattery, I know you had your mic lit up a minute ago.
My questions have been answered. Thank you all.
Perfect. Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve with all staff comments. And, and the waiver requested as well. We have, we have a motion from Commissioner Hasty to approve with all staff comments and the waiver. Um, can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
We have a second from Commissioner Altizer. Uh, Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Hardwick.
Yes.
Hasty.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Slattery.
Yes.
And Coker.
Yes.
That's all seven.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item seven, staff level projects approved. Um, we'll turn this over to Director Free and let him kinda give us a rundown on things, where they stand.
Nothing, let me just see if there's any Cajun steamer, uh, one of the projects, uh, well, that's on pending. On the projects approved, uh, there's a, a site plan amendment for townhome elevations, uh, on, uh, on Durham Phase Three. Uh, I think, yeah, that was some townhomes out there. There's just some mi, very minor changes. Uh, a, a final plat for McKenna Place and Mr. Carwash improvements, uh, to their, uh, to their site plan. I think that was a minor, uh, issue. And that's all the things that were actually approved by staff.
Refresh my memory, where's McKenna Place?
McKenna Place, Grant, is that, is that one you had?
Yes, sir, that's the, uh, it's a apartment complex on Walton Ferry. That's, uh, it's, it's been there quite some time. They, they'd requested to, uh, put a fence and landscaping in. But, uh, what they'd submitted initially wasn't surveyed. And, uh, they had, uh, some of the things that they wanted to do were in the right of way. So, um, I think we're, we're waiting sometime on a re-submital from that to where that has to actually be surveyed and show it on the property. So, so we're, we're looking forward to, to seeing that. And, uh, they had some, some of the things that they were wanting to do though, um, I think we're gonna encroach on the existing parking lot. So, um, if they were actually put on their property. So they're gonna probably have to figure out how to, how to make all that work.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the good thing about that is, is they were looking to visually improve it.
Yeah.
And then we were like, uh, you're gonna need to do, you're gonna need to do a plat, you're gonna survey and a plat. Because we're not for sure where your property line is. And then as Grant stated, uh, then we found out that, oh, it's a little closer than what we thought. So there wasn't as much room as what they had thought. But I think they're still working to try to come up with something that the appearance is better. And that's right there across from Noakes.
Yes.
You know where Noakes, where the little, little apartments, it's one story, but, uh, there's like four or five unit, not four or five units, four or five buildings, uh, over there. So that's where that's located.
Item made on the agenda, staff level projects pending. And again, Director Free will let you kinda give the rundown on things here.
Okay, uh, let me just hit any, these are all just pending. One thing I will mention, the Cajun ste, uh, steamer, uh, on exterior renovations to the new building that's built out here. Just sort of, uh, a little bit south of McAllister's on Indian Lake Boulevard. So, uh, I hear that's a really good restaurant. So, uh, that's just their exterior renovations to a brand-new building, uh, that they're doing on that. Um, Hazel Path Man, Mansion, uh, actually they're looking to do a, a huge fountain in a grassy area. So, so we'll see how that, that turns out, but, uh, we're, we're reviewing that right now. Uh, and then the hospital's just doing a new, uh, a new ER canopy. Uh, and, uh, and amending their site plan, uh, to doing that. And those are, those are the main things that are staff level projects that are pending.
Um, item nine on our agenda is we have a resolution recommending acceptance of the dedication of the completed streets in Durham Farm. Phase one, section eleven. And with that, we've got that presented in front of us. Um, I think it's just pretty well cut and dry. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Thank you, Commissioner Hasty. Can I get a second on that, please?
Second.
Cause second from Commissioner Slattery. Uh, Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Hardwick.
Yes.
Hasty.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Slattery.
Yes.
And Coker.
Yes.
That's all seven.
Item ten on the agenda, any additional comments from planning director for this evening or in advance of next month's meeting?
Yes, I have just a, just a couple of, of short things. And then if anybody had any questions, I could, I can answer those. One of the things we're gonna do is we're, um, uh, working with Lauren. We're gonna, we're gonna change the, uh, appearance of the minutes, uh, for this meeting tonight. So when you get the minutes, uh, next month, uh, it'll be a little bit different than, than what you, what you, the format at which you approved tonight. It'll still be the same format that has all that detail and all the action within it. But what we're gonna do is on that first, uh, first and second page, we'll have all the action items. So that if you're just briefly looking at the minutes, all of the action items are right there. And then you can dig deeper into the, into the minutes if you wanna get, uh, more specific information. Cause it is lengthy minutes and it, and it's not the way we've always had the minutes in the past. This is something we've done, I guess, for maybe about three or four years. But part of the reason that we have the minutes the way they have with the detail. It's so that a lot of times where we're doing something in the planning department and we're looking up something that happened in the past. We'll go to that meeting and then now we can just pull the minutes. And it's got all the particular staff comments and information is all in that particular packet. We're in older minutes. It's just kinda got some vague minutes. And then you've gotta go back and dig up the staff, you know, staff report. And there's a lot of different staff reports. Uh, so this just makes that a lot easier, uh, when we're researching the history of things. Uh, also, I just might mention, you know, I've mentioned to, uh, a couple of times over the last several months. Uh, we're at a very peak high level of our use and occupancies. These are new businesses and, uh, going in new buildings. And new businesses going in older buildings, uh, where you have vacancies. And looking at that, comparing to where we were this time last year and the previous year. We're thirty-five percent ahead of where we were last year and thirty-five percent ahead of where we were in the previous year. Uh, so there's a lot of business activity going on. That business activity is at such a high level. It's impacting staffing, uh, in the planning department, in the fire department and in our codes department as well. Because everybody, when a new business goes in, we all look at it. Does it got the parking? Uh, does it meet zoning? Uh, and fire's gonna look, does it have fire exits? Does it meet all the different fire access issues? And then building codes are gonna look to see, uh, you know, have they done any alterations or do they need to do anything? And then how does that affect the, uh, building structure? Uh, so those are just the two quick things that I was gonna share there, but I can answer any questions that you might have, Chairman, or anybody else.
Any questions or comments from commissioners? The only comment I have, just wanna thank staff for everything they do. Thank y'all. I was getting flagged and I have a microphone on, sorry about that, sir. Um, the only comment I have is just wanted to thank staff and for everything that they do. Thank fire department for being here and just thank everybody for Stephen for everything that y'all do on that as well. Um, just thank planning commissioners for the work that y'all do. And with that, I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay. All right, we got a motion, a second. I'm not gonna try to argue who did it. Um, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank y'all again for everything.